Good evening. We're going to call the special meeting for Akron City Council to order. At this time, our clerk will read the roll.
Bolden.
Aye.
Boys.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
DeShager.
Aye.
Fusco. He has joined online. He may just not be connected yet. So if it's okay with you, Madam President, I'm going to go through the rest of the roll call. Garrett.
President.
Hannah.
Aye.
Kammer. Lombardo.
Aye.
McHitterick.
Aye.
Amobian.
Aye.
And Somerville.
Aye.
You do have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have six items up for a public hearing, and our clerk will read in item number one.
Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, November 17th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct a K-8 elementary and middle school at 2126 13th Street Southwest.
Mr. Antonucci.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Akron Public Schools plans to construct a new school on the subject property. The proposed school would combine the Kenmore Clusters, Pfeiffer Elementary School, and APS' Miller South School for the Visual and Performing Arts into a unified elementary and middle school on the site of the former Kenmore High School. The structure would be situated on the west end of the site, occupying the area of the primary parking lot of the former high school. A one-way drive extending from Battles Avenue on the north, Wyoming Avenue on the south, would provide two rows of parking for 85 vehicles. An auxiliary parking lot for 74 vehicles in the southeast, in the northeast quadrant of the site would supplement the parking for performances and other extracurricular events. Two basketball courts and a play area for grades two through five will be located just to the south of this parking lot. The bulk of the remaining area to the south and east would be utilized as open space, providing areas for athletic fields, recreation, and outdoor education opportunities. A separate playground for pre-kindergarten through first grade students would be located at the southwest corner of the site, near the classrooms for those grades. A plaza along Wyoming Avenue, opposite 14th Street Southwest, will serve as a connection point for students walking to and from the Kenmore Branch Library on Kenmore Boulevard to the south. The new school structure would feature two floors of classrooms, a gymnasium, a dining area, and a 750-seat theater totaling 150,000 square feet of floor space. The facility has been designed to accommodate an enrollment of roughly 750 students and 90 employees. Clear story ribbons and large expanses of glass at the main entry provide abundant natural light. The north and south wings will feature masonry brick and metal panels, nodding to the traditional school materials throughout the district while providing a fresh, modern appeal. Each school will share the same entry vestibule but will have its own dedicated administration area with offices, conference rooms, workrooms, and a secure reception area. The schools will share the cafeteria, gym, and theater, which are all centrally located within the academic classrooms surrounding them. Objectives of the Land Use and Development Guide Plan include providing adequate public services to meet the needs of city residents at a reasonable cost, assuring the safe separation of vehicular and pedestrian traffic, and providing a safe, interesting, and diverse environment which will facilitate and encourage pedestrian movement. These objectives are all met, and the new merged Pfeiffer and Miller South schools will be a focal point and source of pride for this Kenmore neighborhood. And the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, substitute conditions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in the audience or online that wishes to speak in favor or against? If so, we're just going to ask that you please stand at this time so that you may be sworn in by our clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're just going to begin with those who wish to speak in favor. You may approach the podium.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the City Council. I am Deborah Volk with the Akron Public Schools Executive Director, Business Affairs. My address is 10 North Main Street. I am here to ask for your support to move this project forward. This is an exciting opportunity for our pre-K through eight students that are currently housed at either Pfeiffer or Miller South. You realize these particular two buildings have had a long history of being in their communities, and they are very old structures as well. They no longer meet the needs of the educational process for a pre-K5 elementary nor a performing arts school. We are excited to have this item be added to the Kenmore site. I can advise that the current Kenmore building has been abated and demoed, so the property is perfectly adequately ready to take this, providing this provisional approval is given to allow us to move forward. We're excited to offer this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Zach Forney, architect with Prime AE on this project, and address is 540 White Pond Drive here in Akron. I just wanted to come here to say thank you all for seeing this. We're really excited to get this project moving and seeing everybody in the community so excited for it. Also excited, I also want to make myself available for any questions you guys may have based on the design or anything like that as the architect on this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing and hearing none, at this time, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report. Kammer. Connor.
Could you turn on your microphone? Thank you.
I assume that was a yes. Connor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Boys.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Thank you. The report of the committee is favorable. We're asking for passage.
Thank you. Councilman, are there any further comments?
No, just that I would pass it along to the ward council person, Tina Boys, who I know has done a great job of working with APS and landing this development within the Kenmore District. And so I would like to turn over any comments that should be made to her appropriately.
Councilwoman Boys.
Thank you, Madam President. This is exciting. It's hard for folks in my neighborhood to understand that we need permission to build a school on a former school site, but indeed, this is a residential neighborhood, right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And, you know, that's exciting because our youngest, most at-risk kids will continue to have a place to walk to school. That was a big consideration of our community, is we needed to keep our littlest, most at-risk kids within reach of their building. So I thank you for that. Also, we'll have a nice little park space for anyone living around there. So I just want to offer my gratitude to Mr. Forney, his team, and definitely to Deb Volk, who we've been seeing a lot of each other the past three years, and I'm glad it's on a good occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So the committee's report is favorable. Any other comments? Councilwoman Amobian, I look like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam President. I'm just curious, are there any slides or pictures or anything yet? I mean, if it's on your website or something, you can direct us there.
Yes, to your questions, we do have renderings on the website for Akron Public Schools. Please go to www.acrenscholes.com. In the middle of the page, in the lower right, you will see construction projects, and this is one of the four that are currently listed there with the first renderings that we received and provided to the community at the most recent meeting. And then we will have, I do get to announce that there will be a second, if you approve, or third community meeting scheduled for January 14th at 5:00 PM at the Kenmore Community Center to update the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, November 17th, 2025, during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct a gas station convenience store at 786 Britton Road. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 1st and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 28th.
Mr. Antonucci.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Circle K is requesting permission to construct a gas station and convenience store on this property. The new 3,956-square-foot gas station convenience store will be centered in the northern half of the property. The main entrance of the building will face southward. Construction materials would consist of brick, fiber cement block and wall panels, and dark bronze anodized window frames with spandrel glass. Ingress egress to the site along Britton Road will be through the existing 30-foot in width curb cut near the southeastern corner of the property. Fifteen parking spaces are shown in front of the building. A canopy measuring 24 feet in width by 136 feet in length will cover five pump islands and will be centered in the southern half of the property. The site plan depicts landscaping along both street frontages with northern triangular open area containing a small pedestrian roundabout with several interior sidewalks and two benches. Signage will consist of a 5-foot-by-8-foot ground sign atop a 1-foot-in-height brick base sited south of the Britton Road curb cut. The northwest corner of the property will contain a pylon, three-sided sign. Each side will be 30 feet in height and 6 feet wide. Proposed new gas station convenience store will be at a busy intersection where Britton Road, Eastwood Avenue, and Eastland Avenue intersect. This corner property contains a vacant former CVS, whose entrance was at the northeast corner of the building, with parking to the north and east. The proposed layout will have all vehicle fueling activity directed south of the building's main entrance. The proposed interior sidewalks will allow pedestrian access from both Britton Road and Eastland Avenue, while the northern portion of the lot will contain a welcome, park-like amenity with benches. Petitioners worked with the planning staff to incorporate revisions to the site plan to enhance accessibility and aesthetic appeal. The resulting site plan will support both business operations and a stronger public realm in this neighborhood. Key strategic goals of the planning department that the eventual shift to the form-based code will provide. The petitioners' proposed $5 million investment in Goodyear Heights is a suitable and viable reuse of this former CVS site and will provide 15 to 20 employment opportunities. Both the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval, substitute conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here in chambers or online who wishes to speak in favor or against? I think we have a couple online. We're just going to ask that you be sworn in by our clerk.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wellert, do you want to start us off?
Sure. My name is Robert Wellert. Address is 5136 Beach Road, Medina, Ohio. I'm a civil engineer, working for Circle K on this project. And as Mr. Antonucci has mentioned, we have worked with staff in the city to try to come up with a plan that suits and fits the site and the area. This will be the third location that Circle K is building in the city of Akron, and they're committed to investing the resources and finances to make this a nice project. We appreciate the help that the city has given us so far, and we look forward to, you know, constructing another store that'll serve the area and the homeowners and users in the general area of Britton and Eastland.
All right, thank you so much. Do we have anyone else online who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, we will go ahead. We got one more? Yes?
Yeah, this is Brad Bousin, 69 Orchard Drive, Goldstown, Ohio. I'm a construction manager with Circle K. And as Bob said, you know, we're real excited to get another site going here in Akron, Ohio. You guys have been good partners with us over the last couple of years, and we're just excited to have another project going. We appreciate you guys' time.
Thank you so much. If there's no one else wishing to speak in favor or against, we will close our public hearing. We have one gentleman here in chambers. If you'll please stand at this time so you may be sworn in.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Powers, and I'm a resident of Goodyear Heights. I've lived up in Goodyear Heights for 70 years of my life. That intersection up there at Six Corners used to hold three gas stations at one time. It used to hold the Marathon Station, which is now a convenience store. Where Hanini's is, used to be a Humble Station, which is now Restaurant. And where they're talking about building this proposed Circle K right across the street used to be a barber shop, which was a So-Hio. And all three of them are gone. Same way with if you would go down Britton Road right before East High School, there used to be a Marathon there. It's gone. If you go to Linda Theater right there on Goodyear Boulevard, there used to be a So-Hio where the bank is. It's gone. Where the pizza shop is, there used to be a Golf. It's gone. You know, you don't really need another gas station. We have a gas station right down there at the corner of Newton and Canton Road, a brand-new facility being built, as I may add. And if you're going to put something in that corner that they're talking about, you have a fire station there that was built in 1959, and we've replaced a lot of the fire stations in Akron. And that one really does deserve a new facility. And that whole corner between Osage, Britton Road, and Eastland would be better deemed to use for the fire department and maybe a building to where you could teach first aid, community service building. And right across the street, like I said, where the barber shop and the bookstore would be, you could put a Circle K there. You wouldn't have to use that whole corner and use something that actually benefits the community rather than a business that's just going to promote alcohol, gas. Use something for the community instead of just something for the retail development. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull the committee for a favorable report. Kammer. Connor.
Aye.
Boys.
Aye.
Hannah.
Aye.
Report of the committee is favorable.
Any further comments, Councilman Fusco?
Yes, I'd like to again defer to Sharon Connor, the ward person, but I can tell you this, that she has worked on this for quite a while, just as Tina Boys had. These two women are, they're making things happen versus waiting for things to happen. And I just want to congratulate both of them. These two, both the school in Kenmore and the gas station in Goodyear Heights, will be community assets and will help the community, and both of them went out and made it happen. And so I want to congratulate both of them. I'm sure Sharon Connor, the ward person, has comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've been working on the Circle K, the city-
We've been working on the Circle K, the city, Circle K and myself for about two and a half years since that CVS has been vacant that long. It is a valuable resource to that neighborhood. There are, there are some other gas stations, but they are all around the perimeter of the residential neighborhood. Not only will you have one within the residential neighborhood, you will also have a convenience store. And in that area, there are a lot of people that unfortunately don't have cars and need a walkable store within that highly populated area. So I am grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful for all the time that went into creating this gas station. And I'm kind of excited about the little green space too at the corner. So I think it will be a great asset and I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Connor. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, November 17th, 2025 during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct an oversized garage at 1239 Country Club Road. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 1st and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 28th.
Ms. Antonucci.
Thank you, Madam President, members of council. Michael Considine is requesting permission to construct a 30 by 36-foot or 1,080 square foot two-story 22-feet-in-height garage on this property. Conditional use approval is necessary to exceed code requirements by 180 square feet in area and seven feet in height. Proposed garage would be situated behind the dwelling in the northwest corner of the lot. Access will be from the driveway along the west side of the property. The two-story structure will be 22 feet in height and constructed of wood framing with a brick exterior that matches the petitioner's dwelling. It will have a mansard roof with three dormer windows on both the eastern and western elevations. The interior of the structure will contain space on the first floor for parking of two vehicles and storage as well as a separate, separate area behind for recreation and exercise room plus a half bathroom. The second floor will be used for personal storage. Although the garage is larger than allowed by code, it is on a large lot and its positioning will minimize any impact on neighboring properties. The proposed structure on this large, well-maintained lot will enhance the property without intruding upon neighborhood and both the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against? Thank you.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say aye do. Thank you.
And you can approach the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Michael Considine. I live at 1239 Country Club Drive. Just wanted to thank council and planning committee for hearing our request and I'm here to answer any questions. I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. If there's no one else wishing to speak in favor or against, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull a committee for a favorable report. Kammer? Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
And Hannah? Report of the committee is favorable and we're asking for passage this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Fusco, any further comments?
Yeah, I know that the ward council representative is in favor of this. Planning department and commissioner are in favor, so we're recommending approval this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Bolden, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Considine for the way he proceeded with this request. It is a large garage, but he had checked with his neighbors before this and he had everything set up before he came in to request the zoning. And that, that doesn't happen too often. Usually there's some fights, there's some little aggravations, but there was none. Appreciate that. Maybe he should start giving classes on how to do this as a side gig there for you. But we do appreciate that and I'm 100% behind this.
Thank you, Councilman Bolden. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, November 17th, 2025 during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to retain a projecting sign over the right-of-way at 195 South Main Street. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 1st and on, posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 28th.
Ms. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Buckeye State Credit Union is seeking permission to retain a wall-mounted projecting sign for their business at 195 South Main Street. Projecting signs over the South Main Street right-of-way within downtown require conditional use approval. The box dimensions of the proposed round projecting identification sign were measured three feet by three feet and is placed 13 feet above the public right-of-way. The sign is constructed of aluminum with black lettering reading ATM with the Buckeye State Credit Union logo sitting below. Due to the building's recessed facade, there is a challenge created with wayfinding that this sign seeks to solve through this unobtrusive projecting sign. Signage that is well proportioned and well-designed can serve to revitalize and convey an exciting, vibrant and prosperous downtown. The Buckeye State Credit Union is a welcome business and partner in downtown Akron and both the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
I'd like to pull a committee for a favorable report. Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
The report of the committee is favorable.
Councilman Fusco?
I really no further comments. We had heard from Kyle Gillian, the planning director today, as well as the petitioner this afternoon. And this signage is slightly beyond, but we are going to be working, planning is working on developing a newer code in terms of downtown signage that would basically eliminate the need for this coming before council. So we'll wait till that time. However, in the meantime, this is pending and so we're, we're asking that we move this along and approve it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, November 17th, 2025 during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct an oversized garage at 1432-1436 Fowler Avenue. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 1st and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 28th.
Ms. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the council. Jody and Jason Heims are requesting permission to construct a 36 by 39-foot, 1,400-square-foot garage on their property, a legal non-conforming duplex. The project was originally approved as a conditional use by city council in 2014, but it was never completed. The proposed garage would be situated southeast of the existing dwelling on the irregularly-shaped lot. It will be eight feet from the north property line yet behind a neighboring home at 1420 Fowler Avenue. Access will be from a driveway through the middle of the property from either Fowler Avenue or Belcher Avenue. The western elevation would contain two overhead doors with a man door on the north elevation. The garage will be constructed of wood framing and trusses with metal siding and a metal roof to a height of 17 feet. The petitioners stated that the new garage would be used to store daily vehicles, lawn mowers and gardening equipment. Although the garage is larger than allowed by code, it's on a large lot for a duplex and its positioning will minimize any impact on neighboring properties. The garage on this large, well-maintained lot will enhance the property without intruding upon neighboring property. And the planning staff and planning commission recommend approval subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone wishing to speak in favor or against? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Thank you. I'd like to pull a committee for a favorable report. Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Aye.
Yeah, the report of the committee is favorable and we're asking for passage.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Just that the petitioner was here this afternoon and I know that the ward council person is in favor and the, the department is in favor of the commission, everyone. So we're recommending approval this evening.
Thank you. I do believe the petitioner is here. Did you raise your hand to speak? I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. I just want to say thanks for all that you've done. I was just a little late.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Thank you. So the committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
This ordinance passes 12 to 0. Notice is hereby given that the following open comment public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, November 17th, 2025 during a special meeting to be held at 5:00 PM. Ordinance authorizing a conditional use to rebuild a Taco Bell restaurant at 414 East Exchange Street. This notice was advertised in the Akron Beacon Journal on November 1st and posted on Akron City Council's website beginning October 28th.
Ms. Antonucci.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of council. Taco Bell of America is requesting permission to rebuild this restaurant. The existing 2,237-square-foot Stucco Drive-Thru Restaurant, built in 1992, is to be raised and is situated on the eastern half of the property with 34 parking spaces located west and south of the building. The drive-thru lane which exits onto Kern Street is east of the building. The abutting residential properties to the south and west have solid fencing along their property lines. The slightly smaller new restaurant will be situated in the same location and contain 2,102 square feet of area. Building materials will consist of horizontal wall planks, metal panels, aluminum storefront windows and a tube-framed metal arch near the northwest corner of the building. All 30 parking spaces will be west of the building with relocated enclosed dumpsters situated 12 feet from the southwest corner of the property. Existing landscaping will remain with additional plantings along the northern, western and southern elevations of the building. The area south of the drive-thru lane entrance will be widened and landscaped. The existing ground sign near East Exchange Street and Kern Street will be refaced. The petitioner stated that it wanted to construct a fresh building, which it, which it does for all its stores over a 20 to 30-year period. The locations of the drive-thru menu boards and the ground sign will remain the same. Most of the existing parking area will be repaved. The proposed rebuilding of the University Park Restaurant will allow for a modern facility that will complement the recent renovations along East Exchange Street and both planning staff and planning commission recommend approval with conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to open up our public hearing. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak in favor or against?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give will be the truth? If so, please say aye do.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll begin with those who wish to speak in favor. You may approach the podium.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Josh Graber. I'm with GPD Group, 520 South Main Street here in Akron. I am the architect and engineer for this project. So as mentioned, we want to upgrade the site. We want to build a new building on the site and keep roughly the configuration as it is now. And I will speak to Ms. Rogers and I have spoken a few times now. And so I'll just maybe talk about the things that we discussed first before she gets up here. We are moving the dumpster enclosure from where it currently is, which is right behind the building, in between the park, drive-thru entrance and the building, to the corner to increase the amount of options for picking up the trash. If you align it with the drive aisle, a truck can fully pull in, back out and get out of the site without potentially backing up into cars. On other sites, we've had issues with operators not wanting to pick up the trash if it's too close, if they think that their truck is going to hit a parked car, things such as that. It's roughly, the parking lines are, our property lines are weird in this property, but it's roughly 25 feet from the adjacent parcel, which is one house down from Ms. Rogers. And with that, there is a, she mentioned rats. That's news to us, but obviously it's in our best interest to have a cleanly site. We don't want to lose a health license. We have a full pest control management program that we utilize. There should be no issue with that. The, so as such, I think that the dumpster enclosure movement will enhance the cleanliness and operation of the site. Parking was another topic in traffic. Parking has been reduced from 30 spots to 30 spots from 34 spots. We removed spots that are closest to the neighboring property. It's much greater than the eight that are required by zoning. And this restaurant has a reduced number of seats from roughly 40 to 26. If anything COVID taught us at Taco Bell, it's that the drive-thru is the primary instance of getting food, so they're focused on that and reduce seating. So that should be plenty. Their, their standard is 17 spaces across the country, so 30 is definitely overparked, but should be okay for, for that. Otherwise, we've, we've designed the site such that traffic is alleviated as much as possible. There's this, the maximum amount of stack from the drive-thru to the, the streets as possible in this configuration to eliminate any potential concern on exchange. Emergency access is full 360 around the entire site. And I just wanted to mention as well that the operators are local. And while this is a corporately-owned store, the operators are local, so. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions and I'll see my time to revert it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against?
Hello. Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Roberta Rogers and I own the house at 420 Kern Avenue that is one house away from Taco Bell. My biggest concern is the trash, a health concern. I just went home and there were two cups from Taco Bell, a wrapper, a hot sauce package. The trash, it, it just, it's constant. They take, take the straws off at the first house and then the wrappers and then the bags by the end of the street, even though my next-door neighbor usually has his trash can out and open. But there's a lot of trash on, on the street and one of my concerns is, is the rats. My neighbor, he had told me that his children had to move out because, because of the rats and he just wrote for me, 414 Kern Avenue, we had to move because of the rats. There are all kinds of rodents or nuisances. I contacted the animal warden about a possum that's trying to get under my house or he might have gone under there and died, I don't know. But it's, it's a problem with animals that are, are coming into the neighborhood from the, Taco Bell may be the trash can and everything. The, I know that there's a gas station there, but usually because of the fence, they go down Brown Street, they don't come up Kern. And also for the two drive-throughs that are on the next block down, they go over to Spicer probably to throw out their trash because of the, they have to make a right-hand turn onto Exchange Street. I, I had noticed the dumpster today, Kimball, the dump truck, and they did, did have difficulty getting into the parking lot. But my concern is moving the dumpster closer to the houses and apartments. There is a fence there, the wooden fence, though there's slots in the middle, in, in between each fence post so that animals or little creatures can go in and out. Parking is another concern. With less parking at the Taco Bell, they're, they're more likely to park on Kern Avenue and that would hurt or for emergency vehicles that have to come, they're... The fire hydrant isn't down till you get to the corner of Kraus and Kern, so there's a safety issue there. And also, parking, usually the kids from the University of Akron, from the stadium, they park there, even people sometimes, or cars from the gas stations because it's so close. So to have even less parking is not a good idea. Exchange, the traffic flow, Exchange Street's just now working, and I know they have some additional crossing spots for students there on Exchange Street. So with construction, that will take down the traffic for a while, at least, on Exchange Street. And at the corner of Kern and Exchange, you can't make a left-hand turn, but that's where the drive-through just comes out at. And I know people usually do, or try to make a left-hand turn, which makes a possibility for traffic accidents and congestion of traffic. And noise, they're hours, they're open for breakfast first thing in the morning, all the way to late night. There's no really walls or barriers to stop all the sound from the neighbors. Traffic, the speaker, can I take your order, all constantly, and the noise from all of the cars that are there. My concern also is community support, because the corporate office is in a different state, California, and I did hear that they are willing to help out, maybe locally, but they're going to get a lot of business from people going downtown, or coming from downtown, and the university students also. So maybe giving some support for the University of Akron's food pantry, or Mason Elementary. Mason just got the students last year from Robinson, and they have some homeless populations, too. I'm not talking like maybe a Taco Tuesday, like LeBron James School, but something to support the kids in the area. And Mason Park, their basketball, or their senior groups, something to help the people in the community. That would be nice for this company to do. Last, I just want to thank you for taking the opportunity to listen to me. I've always been a resident of Akron. It's a great place to live, and I want to continue to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close our public hearing. Councilman Fusco, what is the committee's pleasure?
Pull a committee to refer this item. Connor?
Aye.
Boys?
Aye.
Hannah?
Thank you so much, Hannah. Okay. Thank you. This item will be referred. If there's nothing else coming before this committee, meeting adjourned.
Council will meet in regular session at 6:30. Thank you.